First up is announce where you're at.
One day I'm gonna get this all down, right?
And then it'll be gone.
Hopefully not. Well, this is Kelly Garrett and I am calling from Oakland County, Lathir Village, Michigan, or I am at in, that's where I'm at.
Bruce Cantor in Lathir Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Ian Ferguson, Lathir Village, Oakland County.
Now may I say insufficiencies of referendum petitions?
Yes, do it.
I did it.
Oh, alright.
As, as you recall, we had, the council had issued the notice of intent to issue and sell the 5.38 million in general obligation limited tax bonds that was for the infrastructure projects. And according to Public Act 34, 2001, voters have 45 days after the publication of the notice of intent to file a referendum petition with the signatures of not less than 10% of the registered voters. This would then require the vote of the majority of voters to issue the bonds. As of February 22nd of this year, 202 signatures were received by the city clerk. This did not meet the minimal, minimal threshold of 392 signatures. And there was also a legal opinion from the city's bond attorney, Patrick McGow, that the form of the referendum petitions does not meet the requirements of Michigan law for referendum petition under Act 34, Act 279, and Act 116. So you have within your packet a copy of his legal opinion as well as the certification of non-sufficiency, insufficiency of referendum petition by from the clerk.
Thank you. Any comments on that? Any questions? Okay, sidewalk ordinance amendment.
So this, I can talk about this one. This came about as part of the, well, part of our discussion about the SAD, possible SAD for replacement of sidewalks. And it, it's a lot, it's a much easier process to do it this way with direct billing versus a special assessment. So in order to do that, there were a couple minor modifications that needed to be made to our ordinance that, to allow for that. So that's what this is. It just allows us to, to do the work and then directly bill it. And if it's not done, or if it's, I'm sorry, if the bill is not paid, then, then it would go on the special assessment rule that we do at the beginning of every year for things such as unpaid water bills or grass cutting or other nuisance type abatement activities that the city may take.
Got it. Thank you. I had a quick brain snap with that one and.
Ruined my Friday night.
If I can ruin your Friday night over mine, I will program and you can get a better Friday night, so.
That's how, that's how much, that's how much effect you have on me.
Man, oh man.
Oh my goodness, yes. I was a little confused. So now I need to explain it a little bit since you made it sound horrible. I was confused and I'll just leave it at that. Sidewalk program is put in place for the safety of everyone. Not just because we up and decided it would be a good thing to add on to our already activities that we're doing. I'm really excited. I know this sounds crazy. I'm not looking forward to my bills going up at all. But I'm really excited about the streets being done, the, you know, water sewage and the sidewalks. I know that sounds crazy, but I just have to say that I am excited to see that we're moving forward and getting our city under control and getting it repaired. So I know a lot of people are not happy about it. I can tell you I have to do some adjustments to my own budget, but I am excited about it. But, sorry, I digress. Does anyone else have any questions or concerns about it?
No, just the one, the one comment I'd make, Suzie and I talked about this earlier today. The, in the, the information with the, the outline with the side, regarding the sidewalk replacement, the outline that's there and then the letter that went out. It does, it does mention a public hearing, but the public hearing isn't gonna happen because we won't be doing it via a special assessment. We'll be doing it via direct billing.
Okay, but obviously we'll, you know, we'll follow up with, you know, not video, but publications stating, other than this, that we're gonna be doing that, right?
Yeah, there's, there's a letter, there's a letter going out. It hasn't gone out yet, but it's going out this week, right Suzie?
It's supposed to go out on Wednesday.
That is, that's a part of this already? Cause wasn't there a letter in the package?
Yeah, that's the letter. It's the heads up letter, right? Telling, telling residents south of 696 and then the business district that, hey, this is coming and you should expect this. You guys could always target your public hearing for, for all this ordinance adjustment for that day. So then it wouldn't be wrong, just saying.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. There you go.
Yeah, yeah. I only recommend that we cover all bases when it comes to communication.
Yeah, they'll get a second letter once we've gone out to, you know, and mark the sidewalks that need fixing or replacing. They will get a second letter saying, hey, we've identified your, your, your property is needing, you know, so many flags replaced and this is what we estimate your cost to be. So they'll get more details.
Are we gonna be ready with the criteria for which we're gonna replace someone's sidewalk? When they do all that? Okay, I'm just asking the devil's advocate questions, cause I want it to be like, we didn't get informed, so I wanna make sure we cover it.
Right, and that's, that's also part of the ordinance that we're approving tonight is, was to make it a little bit more specific in terms of what can, you know, be addressed. And then we've got, we got a very specific, again, in the, in the letter, I think it sits in the packet. There's a chart describing 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 different criteria, 7 different conditions that your sidewalk can be, that a sidewalk can be cited from. For, but the big, the biggest thing I think we need to talk about tonight is, as the study, the study session is, you know, the one issue that we have as part of the sidewalk program is, and everybody's aware of it, is that a lot of the, the flags that need to be replaced are due to city trees.
Yeah, I agree.
And as part of, as part of replacing, we have to grind down those roots, which costs roughly about a hundred dollars per root grind. And the issue that we have is whether or not we as a city wanna take on that cost. And personally, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of us taking on that cost as a city. The uneasy part is we don't know exactly what that cost will be. I think Cheryl and I were talking, you know, a good estimation is probably about $30,000 a year for, for each, each year, if we figure what we're doing about, you know, I, I, the way that I kinda came up with that estimate was just looking at what Ferndale, you know, what they did. And they replaced as part of their program, I think last year was 300 flags. So, you know, if we do 300 flags and, and, you know, a large portion of those flags are due to trees, then we would be picking up a hundred dollars per, per flag, you know, just. Technically, it's the, it's the city's response, I'm sorry, it's the residents' responsibility for replacing that flag and, you know, the, and repairing the condition that caused it, even though it's a city tree. But, you know, just given how much we burden the residents, I think it would be a, again, this is my opinion. And this is what we need to talk about, but, you know, with how much we've been burdening them between the roads and the capital improvement bond and the sidewalks. It'd be nice if we could at least do this for the residents, you know, to shave the roots down so that they didn't have to pick up that cost. They'd still have to pick up the cost of replacing that flag, but we would at least pay for the shaving. So I don't know how other people feel about that, but.
Well, it depends on the criteria. I mean, I mean, obviously if you have a sidewalk that's heaved up so severely because of a tree, then yes, that would, we would have to grind that. But we need to establish a criteria before we actually decide, right? So I think you guys are gonna be working on that, but.
Well, the, the, let me, we're up here for a second. The criteria is whether or not the sidewalk is heaved because of the root. I mean, it's a pretty simple criterion.
Right, no, but.
Wouldn't apply to other things like, you know, if, if, if they was heaving because of one of their own trees or if it was, you know, heaving from freeze thaw and there was no tree under there. It would be just the situations where it's, you know, our city tree that caused the issue.
Okay, so the criteria is, once it's heaved by a tree, you would definitely grind the tree still? Even, no matter how severe it is?
I don't think it said grind the tree in the, in the package. It was saying grind the roots of it.
Right, right, grind it, right, grind the root. That's, sorry, my mistake. Grind the root. That's what I'm talking about. Yeah, so no matter how severe, right, you would still grind the root?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So that, so that, so that the replacement sidewalk would be level with the others and, and, you know.
I mean, oh, you said, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 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 we're talking the same thought. That was my mistake. Just, just one passing comment, and this is just open discussion. I'm not saying that I agree with, you know, the statement that we've burdened the residents. But do you believe that that was a burden for us to say, hey, these are the things that need to be done? And it has to be done. So it, do you think that was a burden for us to kinda say that?
I, 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 I think we're getting into semantics here. I mean, the, the, you know, my, my point is, is we put a lot of, a lot of costs. And I don't think we burden the residents. I think these are costs that they're responsible for as a responsible citizen and participant, person in our community. But with that in mind, if there was a way that we could, you know, help them out a little bit by at least taking a little bit off their plate, you know, because of something that is technically our tree causing the damage.
Right, right, right. I was trying to help you walk that back, cause I don't want anyone to misquote you by saying you burdened the residents. So, okay, thanks.
Quote was, was correct. I think it was just being, it was being conscious of the fact that we understand of that there's a lot that's going on right now. And I don't want anyone to think that we're not conscious, that we have put a lot on everyone's plate right now, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think that that was accurate. And sometimes I think I hear people thinking that we don't live here and we're kinda like, just doing whatever. So I get it.
Technically moved on to the next item, the sidewalk replacement program. So as, as has already been mentioned, the, the plan for this year, one is the Southfield corridor, the commercial corridor from Lincoln to 12 Mile and then the residential area, both east and south of Southfield Road, but below the 11 Mile I-696 pathway, I guess. So the question that we have, that we need some direction from council is relative to the sidewalks that have been lifted because of tree roots. And we have a general indication that the cost to shave those is about $100 each. And I think Scott Ringler is, is online as well. And does, although the, the tree root modification as well as the sidewalk is technically the responsibility of the resident, but did council for this program want to assume that cost for the tree shaving? Do 50/50 or have it all go to the, to that property owner? So we just need some direction from council on that.
Well, I think that it was Mayor Pro Tem's suggestion to take on that for the city to take on the cost for the trees. I know that that's kind of, it's scary within itself, cause you don't know what the amount is going to be.
Right.
That was, yeah.
Yeah.
So when you go to the regular.
Agree with you. I'm not, I'm not interrupting you. I've agreed with you. Go ahead.
No, if you were gonna get in there, I was gonna 12 Mile, that's odd.
No, I was just saying, I hate to write, I hate to have a blank check to know what that cost is. I don't wanna blank check. I wanna know what that number is before I agree to anything.
Well, we're going to have to do a more detailed survey of the sidewalk areas that are impacted anyway. And as part of that, we can start trying to get a count of the trees and the locations where that's going to be an issue. And we'll have a firmer number. But for when you go into the, the regular session as part of the program, that intention needs to be inserted.
Right.
Whether it's going to be assumed by council or not, by the city or not.
Makes sense.
Scott Baker, the, since we're not doing this, I'm just thinking of the genesis of this whole conversation from when it first started, we were under the assumption that we were gonna be doing a special assessment. So if we're not doing a special assessment, can we, can we make this, you know, can, can we say that our intention is to pick up the cost for the, for the, for the root grinding? Contingent upon what we find as we get into the, you know, over the next few weeks, as we get into the, the detailed assessment of the individual sidewalks? Or is that something that absolutely has to be decided today?
I think, I mean, I don't think there absolutely has to be decided today, but I would, I mean, once, I think once the decision's made, I, I get where you're going with it. If, if the city gets into it and they say, okay, we're gonna cover it and then it turns out to be more than anticipated, rolling back from that, I, I would recommend against doing that. I think if, if the, you know, I don't know the best way to put it, I guess if the decision's made to move forward and cover the cost and that, that should be what should be done.
Right, but what, what, I mean, what, what, what's to stop us from waiting a month to make this decision?
I don't think, there is no timetable on it now, because, because we're not gonna be putting it in. We're not building the SAD, the total project cost yet, so.
Right, I, I think that was my point, was the, when we made, when we originally said, well, we need to find this out by March 15th, we were under the assumption that we were gonna be doing a public hearing and a special assessment. But since we're not doing that, we just wait till next month to make the decision.
Yeah, you can wait till you have more information on, you know, a better cost estimate to make that decision too.
Will that work for you, Cheryl?
Yes. But we won't be able to respond to residents. We'll have to let them know that the total cost will be made available in April or later, so, okay.
Yeah, cause we weren't gonna get the final letters out to them till the end of May anyways, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so if it takes us a month or six weeks or whatever to get, when, when are they, when are they doing the, I know it's probably in there, but you probably know off the top of your head, when are they doing the final walkthroughs to determine the deficiencies?
That should start very soon. I know Rami was out there initially, but we hadn't finalized what the, the form is going to be. But I think we're pretty much on board with what that's going to look like.
Okay, so it'd probably be, so it'd probably be close to, by next meeting, we, we would probably have enough information?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's one observation. So obviously Mayor Pro Tem Cantor would like for us to go down that road, right? But let's just hypothetically think of a plan B. Let's just say we get a number back that we can't swallow. Can we have a plan B? Maybe, you know, we pick up half the cost or something like that. Because I, since this, you know, study session is being recorded, I don't want anyone to misinterpret what our intentions are by saying, hey, we're gonna pay. And then we get a number back that may not work and then we're stuck. So can we have a plan B in there?
Well, that, I think that's the, the whole point is to wait and see what the, what the magnitude is and then we can have that conversation, you know, and if we can't bite it off and we, then maybe we can say, all right, well, why don't we pay for half of it or, you know, or, you know, if it's huge, you know, we might end up saying it has to be the residents, the way that the ordinance states. So, yeah, that's the whole idea.
Okay, all right. I'm agree with that. Thanks.
Sweet then. Water meter and related projects.
Hold on, I need to, okay. Okay, let's start with the water meters. As you know, we had 10 tested to get some verification on if they're accurate or not. I, I know I've heard from some of the residents that were involved and saw on Facebook that they were indicating that they weren't accurate. I have not yet received the official report from the SLC Meter Company to respond to that. But in the meantime, as even today, Pam and I had a, a conference call with the Ferguson Company, which were the ones that installed and provided the water meters. And they were suggesting to even have another test case of some of those that were tested already to have another verification, to make certain that what was discovered was accurate. Because they said it was highly unusual for meters to be running fast. As they get aged, they tend to run slow.
Right.
So they wanted to make certain that was actually what was occurring. Also, they indicated that they could do an audit of our, the billing system to make certain, verify that the information in the billing is accurate. That was $1,200, but I think it's probably wise to go ahead with that just so that we can be certain that the information that we are using for our billing system is consistent with what those numbers should be.
Yeah, just full disclosure, I do not own a water meter installation company, nor any of my relatives. If they're, if they're not from Jamaica, they don't, they don't belong to me. So I'm just making this disclaimer right now. I am not into water meter business at all.
So, and then in the meantime, as we all pretty much are assuming, the meters are just becoming outdated and need to be replaced. And Suzie and Scott Ringler are working on drafting the RFP for that. And as was mentioned previously, we would like the ones where you can have the remote reading, meetings, fed into City Hall so that the cars, the vehicles don't have to drive around to pick up the, the readings for those.
Yeah, and just, just a reminder that that was included, that was all included in the capital improvement bond issue.
And then the lead service line replacement, we have identified the initial approximately 10 homes that have, do have the lead service and we know they need to be replaced. We'll be working with the subcontractors through SACWA to have that work done. And then in regards to the service line verification from the both sides of the stop box, we'll be working with Sunday Building in regards to doing that work. We were anticipating they were gonna start even as soon as this week, but the recommendation from SACWA was to wait at least a week or two because they're expecting Eagle to come down with some specifications in terms of how you are supposed to make those identifications. And if it has to be every residence or if a sample will suffice for their verification purposes. So we're hoping to get that information before the end of this month so that Sunday can get started with those certifications by the beginning of April. And I want to remind everyone to do their self-survey of the water service line material that connects to their water meters. It's real easy. There's quick instructions that's available on the website and in this packet. And it'll be in the Your Town. That'll be going out in approximately a week or so. So to verify what the material is, so we'll all know if they have lead or galvanized materials connected to the water meter, which will require the replacement of the entire water line at the cost of the city, which is also included in the capital improvement bonds.
So I have one thing on that, Cheryl, that I noticed, both in the discussion, in the documentation for the water meter, water related, as well as the contract that we're gonna approve later this evening with, with Sunday. It, it did state in a couple different places about the stop boxes, which, which is where you turn the water on and off and where the lines go in and out, for people who don't know. We had, we had said as, as part of the project that we were going to replace, and we budgeted for it, that we were going to replace the stop boxes, because most of those stop boxes are 50 to 75 years old and a lot of them don't work. And the one, the verbiage that I saw in the contract and somewhere else was, it said $75 per, to replace any broken stop boxes. So it really shouldn't be the $75 for, for broken stop boxes. It should be $75 to replace the stop box, because the assumption was that we were going to replace the stop boxes. So that, because, again, for people who don't know, we've gotta dig a five-foot pit to do this verification in the front lawn. And as long as we're digging down that five-foot pit, it makes sense now to replace the stop boxes because they are old and outdated. So I just wanted to make sure we, it's, it's a subtle distinction, but I wanna make sure that we, Sunday is aware of the fact that we're planning on replacing all the stop boxes, not just ones that are broken.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, good, good point, Bruce.
You, anything else? Can we have an update from the Infrastructure Committee, if any?
I don't really have anything, other than the stuff we're talking about tonight with respect to, that we just talked about with water and sidewalk. Everything's going as planned. Roads, you know, roads are starting hopefully around May 3rd. And as you know from the discussion already, we're already starting to work on the capital improvement stuff. So like you said earlier, it's exciting. You know, we, I think, I don't know the exact number, but maybe Cheryl does. But I think we've had probably close to 10 water main breaks in the last, last month. It seems like every day I, I, I get a notification telling us we have another water main break. And so for residents who are watching, this is, you know, while it's painful, you know, for all of us to have to pay a little bit more on our water bill, this is exactly why we're doing that. Each of those water main breaks is an unplanned, you know, 2, 3, 4, $5,000 expense. You know, that, that's money down the drain, so to speak, pun, pun, sort of intended. So, you know, this is, this is why we're doing this. And it's, you know, it's not sexy, but it's exciting to, you know, get this stuff done and get our city back to where it needs to be, so.
And what often happens and seems to be happening in this situation, I think it happened on Roseland as well, is when you have the break in one spot, you fix that and then just a few feet further down, you know, that also becomes compromised. But I also want to let you know, when I send out those alerts in regards to the water meters, I'm sorry, the water mains being under construction or reconstruction, that information is also shared with the Southfield Fire Department, EMS and Police Department.
Right, yeah, Bruce, a good observation on that. And a lot of people don't realize, you have zero control out there when you have a water main break, cause we have no gate valves to close off, even though we do have gate valves, but they don't work. And so if anyone's fixed a plumbing leak in their lifetime, knows how difficult it is to do it under controlled circumstances. Now we're outside. It's, it's not in control. We cannot control the water. And yeah, we're gonna have another break down the road, down the, the line, right, down the pipeline. So that's, that's the reason why we're on this adventure. We gotta take care of this. And it's painful for us, because you guys may not agree with what we're doing, but we know we have to get this done, for sure.
So relative to the bonds, today I gave the notice to proceed to standard impores. It felt a little bit like signing the mortgage, like this is it, there's no turn back.
Exactly, yeah, I agree. Gotta get going.
Yeah, I agree. What is next? The marijuana cannabis update.
There wasn't a lot to update you on. The Planning Commission is still working on crafting that language. And I just wanted to remind everyone that our official response, because we get a lot of people calling all the time in regards to, you know, what are we doing and, you know, how can they get in the loop? And the, it is at this point in time, but the out, out ordinance still in place, there is no conversation to be had regarding these inquiries. If and when the ordinances are adopted, the primary contact will be the Economic and Community Development Director.
Thank you.
And then I shared information in regards to the first disbursement from the state for those municipalities that did have the recreational licenses.
Thanks. Um, update for the professional auditing services, RFP.
Yes, so in my spare time, I've been working on the RFP for the audit. And the initial draft was shared with council members Ferguson and Celine. And I have a, a meeting this week, a conference call with Plant Moran, Pam and I, to work, make certain that all of the components of what they provide in terms of their services are incorporated into the RFP language.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Um, any discussion around the agenda, agenda items?
Just, just the last, the last one that Cheryl just mentioned. So Cheryl, you were comfortable with what we had highlighted there and recommended, right? You didn't, you didn't see anything that just didn't fit with what we thought would work for us, right?
No, no, I didn't use the, the community that you had suggested, because there's just seemed so very cumbersome with.
Right. Yeah, it's, it's a monster.
Second page, I was like, I have to read this. Second page, I was like, I have to read this three times to figure out what the heck they were asking.
Exactly.
I went to the city of Novi and I know their attorney, so I figured it had been properly vetted. I used theirs as the base, um, for drafting this one.
Oh, okay, that's good, thanks.
Okay, so any, um, discussions for the agenda or council comments?
Uh, I got one or two, um. So just what, in the, in Suzie's, uh, in Suzie's DDA report, um, one of the things that it talked about in there was, was, um. Uh. That we were gonna use, it wa- it was a cross wire, um, we were gonna be using code enforcement for, um. Uh, fixing the ditches on Cambridge and that, that really is, is code enforcement for fixing the culverts for the existing roads that are being repaired this year. Uh, but the only reason why I bring that up is just, just a kind of a status check, one of the things that we had said that we were gonna try to do. And I haven't, haven't even brought this up Cheryl, because I know you're doing a ton of stuff, but. Um, originally we had said that we were gonna shoot for, um, the April meeting for, uh, the, beginning the process for the SAD for Cambridge for next year. Um, I didn't know if we had started on that or if, you know, we're, if, if we're still on target for that or we're gonna move it back at all. Given all the other work that you have or whatever, but, uh, I just wanted to make sure that that didn't slip through the cracks, so.
No, we're working on the, uh, initial communication with the residents and I guess that's part of my question, are we doing this one as an SAD? Or are we doing this as, as a, as a direct billing as well?
No, this, this one's definitely an SAD. So thi- this, this, this was the one, just as a reminder, um, we were going to repave the, the segment. Uh, east of, uh, on Cambridge, east of Southfield to Lathor Boulevard. Um, we were going to repave it this summer. Uh, and we were going to use that, if you remember this, the roads we picked this summer were roads that didn't have. Much of, much at all of any ditch work that needed to be done, given the late start, we had this whole conversation a few, few months back. Um, but we did, we, at that time, we had, had chosen Cambridge because we wanted to do at least one SAD this year. So that we kind of got used to the process because we're gonna have more of them in year two and year three. And as Scott Ringler, who's on the call, I believe, and he can chime in if he has anything to add. Um, as they got into the design, um, so that we could get the SAD rolling for this year. Uh, we found that there was a gas line that, uh, consumers wants to move, but they couldn't move. And it needs to be out of the way in order for them to do the ditching work. Um, and consumers couldn't move it this summer, so they, they can move it in time for next summer's construction season. Um, but we had said that, that we were still going to move forward with the SAD for this year, not, not get it into effect. And so that until, not get it into effect officially until after the tax season. So they, they're not hit with the tax bill this, this summer, uh, but they would get it next, next summer as the construction is, is starting. Uh, but that, but this, this one, on, on Cambridge, this is, this is, uh, a much more major ditch project. Um, you know, they have severe problems over there and, and there, there's not an easy solution on that, that particular street. And part of the reason why we had started on that particular street was because those people had actually come to us, or at least. Several of the residents on that street had come to us, um, requesting that we do something, uh, with them. Uh, and, and they've been talking to their neighbors, so we figured that that would be the. Uh, a, a good place to start with a street that, that's amenable to, you know, having their, their, their issue taken care of, knowing that it's going to cost some, some, some money, so.
Okay, so.
Good update.
So I'll work with Suzie and Scott in particular in regards to making certain we have all the dates and. Hearings and notices lined up regarding the SAD for that area.
Yeah, and I think Scott Ringler has the, you know, he's, he's got the costs done, I think, and, and so it's just a matter of figuring out which houses it would be split between, which is, I think there were twelve houses on that street. Um.
Now, relative to the work itself, we're only including the culverts, not the ditches. There might be a Scott Ringler.
Well, in this, in this, this particular case, it's the, it's, it's the ditches that are being worked on. The actual ditch, building a hole, uh, uh, you know, under drain. Um, you know, so, so their, their, their ditches, well, they'll still have, uh, uh, and Scott can correct me if I'm wrong, but they'll, they'll have a little bit of a ditch left. But a lot of it gets filled in with the process, correct Scott?
That is correct, it'll be a very soft swale, but the ditches will generally be filled in with, uh, eight inch under drain. Installed underneath the ditch going east and west.
Can we get a comprehensive list of activities when, when these will start? Because obviously we'll have to communicate that to the residents and we also want to articulate it very well as, you know, as residents ask us, right? So I want to be able to speak to a list, hey, Cambridge is gonna start on this date, this is what we're gonna do, something like that. But that's possible.
Yeah, well, I mean, everything, yeah, I mean, we can definitely do that, I mean, it's, I mean, the, the, as far as the, the, the. Cambridge goes, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a prescribed process, cause they, you know, the SAD has to be done and there's steps and. Time ranges and, you know, certain number of days where things have to be done, so that's all gonna be on a very specific schedule.
Okay, I mean, just the high level, it doesn't have to be too detailed, just whatever, street, date, start time, whatever.
Yeah.
Um, ju- just one last thing, let me step back to the sidewalk, um, uh, repair or, um, project. Just so, I'm making this statement just so the residents, um, you know, are clear, right? So the project, the sidewalk project is not just for sidewalks that have heaved up blocks because of trees. It's also sidewalks that are damaged that ca- that need to be replaced as well, correct? Okay, just wanted to make that clear because that was a question that came up a couple of weeks ago and I just want to. Obviously it's gonna come up with other people, so I want to capture it here.
Yeah.
So, and going back to the, the SAD. So in this situation, unlike the sidewalks, we really aren't giving the residents an option to do it themselves. Because there's some specifics relative to the road project that'll have to be accommodated.
But well, that, that and it's a whole system, it's not, you know, it's not just fix your culverting, you're done, you know, the ditches, you know, they're, they're. Putting in tubes and making a, a swell and filling in the ditch, you know, filling in. You know, as Scott referred with a soft swell, I mean, this, it's a whole comprehensive system, system-wide project for that street.
Well, as Scott knows, I say every day, I don't want to be a civil engineer, so.
Well, a, a, a lot of good that does, he turned me into one.
Suzie's next.
You took the words right out of my mouth, Scott. Well, I know my weak point, so I keep it between the, uh, four. Good, tell me what you're, what you're doing. Anybody have anything else?
Uh, just one other question, I know we, uh, a few months ago, we talked about getting a letter out to all the, the, the businesses about, uh. Kind of the trash situation, I don't know if that's happened or not, but, uh, hopefully we can make that happen, cause it's, it's bad. I know Romney's been, I know Romney's been looking into some of the specific reports, but just in general, it's, it's bad. I know it's end of winter, so it's thawing and a lot of this stuff appears, but none of the businesses seem to really be doing anything about it.
I'll remind him, I know he had, um, worked out a gentleman's agreement to that, you know, he will wait until the snow melted. And hopefully we're done with that for now, but it is.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll ask him about getting back on that.
I think that we need to have a overall, um, visit, again, I saw Romney out today, but I just noticed that there's a lot. Of, uh, recycle cans, I guess, I'd say more, that are in the driveways. Um, and I had the pleasure of watching animals go in and out of one of them, but the top is still open. Um, not that it wouldn't happen in the backyard also, but, um, in the front yard and the front driveway.
Yeah.
Just to, you know, reiterate with that, um. Anything else? Seems like there was something else I was gonna bring up and now I can't remember what it was. Oh, um, I haven't forgotten, um, about the, I know that we, we, we don't want to talk about this. However, it is going to happen again, it is going to snow again at some point. And we need to figure out who was responsible for the sidewalks on, um, eleven mile. Because, and I do appreciate it, someone, you're responsible?
Oakland County.
The DDA, the DDA is going to be taking care of. The sidewalks along the Service Drive, um, Corey's been getting some, some quotes and, and whatnot for.
That's good.
For that work.
That's good, that's good news.
We're on it, we're on it.
That is really good news, cause a lot of people walk that.
So, uh, but originally when we talked about it, that was, um. Obviously got the direction you needed Cheryl from Oakland County.
Uh huh.
Okay, so by the time that the snow comes again next year, we'll have everything in, um, next year, at the end of this year, excuse me. Um, that, that'll be in place, so we'll have someone that is, um, going to take care of it or company.
That is my plan, yes.
And I appreciate the, um, resident that kept me on my toes to remind me to ask about it, even though we are going into the spring, which, you know. Doesn't hurt to kind of remind us that we have something that you would ask, so.
Oh, it's perfect, um, we're, it's going to be rolled right into the, uh, the budget stuff. The DDA is gonna be working on for this, this week and next, so, or next month, so. Okay, perfect timing.
Hey Suzie, can I send you some information on a resident that has a snow removal company? Okay, I'll send that to you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
And before you go, I also want to remind the council members that, um, you were sent the goals. On worksheet, so if you could look at it and share your thoughts in advance of the meeting on Thursday, that would be helpful.
Sure, oh, yeah, of course we would do that, uh. Have you heard from, um, Celine or Donna?
I did hear from, um, Councilmember Stallings and she indicated that she was not able to attend today's meeting. I have not heard from Councilmember Siddiqui, I'm checking to see if I received any messages.
I haven't. Sorry, go ahead, Ian.
No, go ahead, I said I haven't heard from Celine, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, has, has she reached out to any of us, uh, or anybody else in terms of keeping abreast of what's going on? I mean, it's been a lot of meetings, I know, I know there's some. I, I don't, I think, I think from what I heard, some of the past meetings, their health issues is why she's, she's out, so obviously excused absences, but. Um, you know, is, is she keeping in touch with any of us?
Madam Mayor?
I hear from her occasionally.
Okay.
I haven't heard from, I mean, I heard from her the first time that she was out, but I have not heard anything else.
Okay. All right, I have one thing that was on my list, uh, Bruce, this was one of the soft, uh, items. So the culvert gardens, obviously before you guys start your, start those culvert projects. Are we, are we reaching out to those residents that have those gardens?
Uh, well, and, and right, this, this year, there, there really aren't any issues with that. Uh, that'll be, that'll be more of an issue for, for years two and three when we get into. Um, more substantial, potentially more substantial, uh, ditching projects. Um, and you know, as, as we said in the committee and recommended to council, the, and the recommendation that was accepted. Um, you know, those will be an administrative decision, you know, on a case-by-case basis, cause there really wasn't a way of, you know, coming up with a general rule for them. Because they're so varied, you know, there's a right way and a wrong way for those, you know. Some people have gardens and they, they impede the water flow, cause they're not done right, whereas some people have gardens that were done right and are actually functioning well and. Um, you know, a- and again, it's gonna be a case-by-case basis, there may be some that are functioning well, but just based upon the way that the. The, the whole system needs to be graded to make it work, might have to be moved, I mean, again, it's ca- gonna be a case-by-case basis.
Yep, I mean, I would encourage that we at least send out some sort of notification saying. If you have a desire to, to plant a garden this summer in the culverts, please do not, here are the reasons why. If we can do that, I would appreciate that.
Well, that might be something to put in the. Um. Our town.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Cheryl, I see you're taking a note, is that what you're writing down?
Cause I know it's coming, I, it's coming, so I just want to cover it.
It's too late for the one that's going to be going out in April, which is probably the one people will see before planting, but we can do it in the summer.
Yeah, yeah.
We can do it through the e-newsletters.
Yeah, that'd be a good way.
Yeah, that makes sense, thanks. Nothing further for me, thank you.
Okay, um, I can give you all, uh, fourteen.
Comment.
Huh?
How about comment?
Okay, public comment. Anyone in the public that would like to speak? Any hands raised? That I can't see?
No hands raised, then I.
No hand raised.
Thank you, Kevin.
Anything in the chat room?
Okay, well, I can give you back fourteen, um, minutes. Or we can come up with other things to put on Cheryl's plate that will stress her out. Um, so it's totally up to you how you all like to handle this fourteen minutes.
Cheryl, I have one quick question for you, is the, is the link for the council meeting the same as the link for, the same as the link that we use?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, what link are you talking about, the agenda or the Zoom link?
The Zoom link.
It's a different link.
Okay.
Also, we do have to log out, we can't just off camera.
No, but, but if, if a resident wants to hook into the Zoom meeting, can they use the same link that we do?
Technically, it, it guesses the same link.
Okay.
Information is the same, no matter if you're a council member or a resident.
Got it, thank you.
Okay.
On the, you know, one thing, um, there is a new group, um, being formed in Lathor, but I don't know if you all saw it, but it is, um. I don't want to say the wrong words, I forgot what it was, um.
I don't remember the exact name either.
And you see, I'm pausing on the words, cause I know that. I don't want to be dinged on anything, so there's a new group that is going to be for. Um, I know everybody's looking it up, so I'm trying to stretch this out, so someone will jump in there and say the name of it.
I know the group, it's, uh. You talk.
Here, here's, here's what they, they wrote to me, it says, forming a new social group for residents of Lathor Village that identify with the LGBTQ.
Thank you, thank you.
Community.
So, the reason why I stumble over that, I work for an organization that, um, is very, very, uh, conscious of what. Words you use and so I am just trying to, uh. Be consciously correct, so there's a new social group that's, um. People that either identify, I guess anyone can join the LGBTU group. Which is actually, um, to me, it is rather exciting just to have, uh, another perspective, another, um, social group. I don't believe that it costs anything to join, are you reading it, Bruce?
No, it's, I, 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 it's just gonna be, it's a social group, so.
Yeah, there's no cost there.
So, um, the one thing that, um, just in the work that I do, I'm very learning a lot. Is that, uh, I reached out and said that perhaps, you know, uh, because it's new. And that we did celebrate diversity before within the, uh, city. That might want to really think about celebrating and acknowledging the LGBTQ community in June during their prime month. And so that's something that we might wanna, not might, we should talk with Chris about in, um, perhaps even, um. Which my brain, you all are gonna totally turn the cameras off soon as I say this, but to have a, a, a pride parade. But then loop it in with, um. The, uh, what's his name, who did the costumes?
Oh, Ralph, oh Ralph. Yeah, that makes sense.
I thought that was just, you know, because. You know, anyway, that's my thoughts, um, just put that little thought in your head, so, um, yeah.
Good idea, I mean, let's, let's think about it and talk about it some more.
Well, at the same time, we aren't planning any large events or, um, parades. Who knows how that might change, but I know right now we're not.
I'm conscious of it only because I know that we did do a gathering, um, in front of the, uh, police station. Uh, I think I was part of, what group was that, uh, Ian, remember, we have those speeches and things like that? Uh, I think I was part of, what group was that? Uh, Ian, remember? We have those speeches and things like that.
Oh, man. My brain's mush. BLM.
Yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was.
Black Lives Matter, I think. There was a couple of groups. There was a couple of groups. That's one of them, but. My brain's mush today.
Well, all right, so, um. I'll ask again if there's any public comments right now. Otherwise, um, I'll meet you all in the next room, the next Zoom room.
All right.
Open comments.
All right.
I will Zoom you later.
All righty.
See you in a few minutes.
See you later.